Police department, but if a municipality opts to do so, the general statutes require that a board of police commissioners be created, quote, "for the purpose of organizing and maintaining a police department in said town." The police commissioners will have the general management of the police department and shall make all needful regulations for the operations of the department. The general statutes also provide that a board of police commissioners be established by ordinance. The town's charter is consistent with this requirement, provides that the Board of Selectmen may, by ordinance, create boards and specify their powers and duties. And the statute also provides that the Board of Police Commissioners shall consist of three, five, or seven electors, all of whom shall be resident taxpayers of such town. And this provision is consistent with our charter, which provides that appointed boards and officers must be a resident elector of the town. So we're consistent with the state statutes in that regard, too. The police commission, when established, would have the sole power of appointment, promotion, and removal of officers and members of the police department. The regulations that it adopts will provide that appointees shall hold office during good behavior and until removed for cause or upon written notice and after a hearing. The general statutes also require that expenses, salaries, and all costs of maintenance and equipment for the police department shall be paid by such town in the same manner as other expenses of the town government. Now, once the Board of Police Commissioners is established, and there are sufficient funds appropriated for the operation of the police department, and a police chief is appointed and sworn, the following resolutions could be contemporaneously repealed. We have several resolutions and ordinances on the books, which we don't want to have remain there because they would be inconsistent. So the amended ordinance concerning the terms of appointment and qualifications of constables would be contemporaneously repealed. A resolution designating the first selectman as the town agent to act as chief of police would be repealed. And a resolution regarding the establishment of a resident state policeman in the town of East Lime would be repealed. You've heard several presentations regarding mechanics and what would be done once the police chief is hired and once the rules and regulations are adopted, and that would be outside the scope of this presentation. I did present to you a preliminary draft of a proposed ordinance establishing a Board of Police Commissioners. I think you have it in your packages.
Yes, yes.
And I don't know how much detail you want me to go into. Do you want me to summarize it or try to go through it?
Very much summarize.
All right.
I think we just want to say, okay, we would establish, with this ordinance, the Board of Selectmen would be responsible to establish a police commission.
All right. That's a good summary. If you want a little bit more, I can give it to you. I think you want a little more.
Yeah.
All right. The ordinance provides that the Board of Police Commissioners shall be five members and consist of the first selectman and four resident electors of the town appointed by the first selectman, by the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry. The first selectman will be chairman, and upon his absence or disability, the deputy first selectman will have the powers and perform the duties of the absent or disabled chairman, which shall include presiding at meetings of the commission and having a right to vote at the meetings. It's good to specify that to stop arguments later on. The terms of the appointed members shall be as follows. Two terms shall be filled by an appointment until the first Monday of January 2017, at which time they will be filled by appointment for four years. The other two remaining terms shall be filled by appointment until the first Monday of January 2019, at which time they would be filled by appointment for four years. So we would have a staggered rotation of the appointed members. The draft isolates the members of this Board of Police Commissioners by providing that no member of the Board, no appointed member of the Board of Police Commissioners shall hold any other elective or appointed office within the town. The next paragraph summarizes all the powers that the state statute allows the Board to have, the general management and supervision of the police, making regulations, appointing, promoting, and it also provides that the members of the police department will have all such authority with respect to the service of criminal process and the enforcement of criminal laws, as is vested by the general statutes in police officers and constables. And the police department, under the direction of the Board of Police Commissioners, will be responsible for the preservation of the public peace, prevention of crime, apprehension of criminals, regulation of traffic, protection of rights of person and property, enforcement of laws of the state, and the ordinances of the town. All members of the department, except clerks, shall have the same powers and duties with respect to the service of criminal process and enforcement of criminal laws, as are vested in officers by the general statutes. The police department shall consist of a chief of police and such other officers of rank, patrolmen, supernumeraries, and clerks, as may be necessary to discharge the duties of the police department. The establishment of grades within the department shall be at the discretion of the Board of Police Commissioners. The appointment of chief of police will be made only after certification of the applicant I have here by the State of Connecticut Personnel Department. Probably some experts here will tell me which ones.
Host.
Police Officer Sanders.
All right. We'll put that in. Thank you very much for that. And the duties of the police chief, oh, the chief, or his inherent, his or her absence, the officer of rank designated by the Board of Police Commissioners, shall be responsible for the administration of the affairs of the police department under the direction of the Board of Police Commissioners. Those duties will include, but not be limited to, the day-to-day operation of the police department, report on such operations to the Board of Police Commissioners at such intervals as the Board shall establish, initiate and cause to be carried out a continued program for instruction and training of personnel, develop and preserve a system of records with respect to law enforcement and other activities and communications, maintain records of all personnel by rank, grade, and category, render periodic reports to the Board of Police Commissioners regarding the performance of the personnel, establish schedules and rules with respect to kinds of duties, be personally responsible for the review of records with respect to all arrests, accidents, and complaints made by or for the department, and render a monthly report. Report to the Board of Police Commissioners regarding any neglect of duty or violation of department rules and regulations. The chief of police.
Now, sir, if I could just interrupt you, just kind of reading through it now.
Yeah.
Maybe more of a summary.
I'm going to skip in a minute.
All right, let's get to some.
I'm right there. I just got to the point where we need not read provisions regarding the assignment of police officials to extra duty. And frankly, we didn't know whether that should be in the ordinance at all, or whether it would be in a regulation established by the police, Board of Police Commissioners, but it's better to put it in so we can take it out later if we don't need it. For purposes of this ordinance and transition from the constabulary, the police department shall be considered as established when the Board of Police Commissioners has adopted such regulations and procedures as may be necessary or desirable for the proper functioning of a police department, and sufficient funds have been appropriated to the Board, and a chief of police has been appointed and sworn. The Board of Police Commissioners shall certify to the town clerk and the Board of Selectmen the date on which the police department is established. On that date, all those previous ordinances we talked about would be repealed, and on that date, all full-time constables who are appointed under the ordinance and are in active service and in good standing on the effective date of the ordinance shall be officers of the police department with such rank, years of service, castifications, et cetera. Unsworn clerks who are in active service and in good standing shall be employees of the police department. On the date the police department is established, all business pending in the constabulary, including but not limited to applications, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, permits, warrants, arrests, et cetera, shall continue, and records of any kind in nature whatsoever, shall continue to be pending at the police department. All items and property and equipment used in connection with the business of the constabulary shall continue to be used by the police department. That's a summary.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was.
You guys get paid by the hour, so, you know.
Anywhere resident here.
Attorney, oh, Carl, thank you. So let's talk about the process. Let's talk about, let's get off the paper. Let's talk about the process. What are we, as the Board of Selectmen, voting on here? We're voting on establishing a Board of Police Commissioners.
Yes.
That's the ordinance.
Yes.
And within that ordinance also talks about the responsibilities of the police commission, which is to hire a chief, establish policy and procedure, et cetera, et cetera, and really take the ball down the field. They, the police commission, will be the one to, you know, the training of the dispatchers and the other necessary record-keeping in establishing how we're going to get that, be within the scope of what it means to be an independent police force, which has been duly outlined all evening. So it's a commission, as well, we'll hire that chief, and then they will establish a date when the flick of the switch happens.
They will certify the date on which they, that all that's been done.
With a 30-day notice to the state police, State of Connecticut, of which we're under contract. That's what this ordinance is. Doesn't build a building, doesn't do anything else. It establishes a police commission, and that commission, hopefully, will heed the advice of this task force, which says, do it soon. Do it quickly. But it doesn't say when it will be done, when we make the switch. It just establishes a police commission. First selectman, whoever he or she is, will sit on it with, I would assume, two Democrats and two Republican commissioners, because we have minority representation and all that. So they'll be appointed by the town committees, through the Board of Selectmen, will make that decision.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. That's what we're doing here. To enact an ordinance? Let's go over how we enact ordinances in this town. We have a public hearing.
There must be a publication in a newspaper of the pendency of the public hearing at least five days before the holding of the hearing, and a posting at the town clerk's office, and a public hearing conducted by the Board of Selectmen before the ordinance can be adopted.
Okay. And then the Board of Selectmen vote on that ordinance, and it becomes an ordinance.
Within 10 days, after 10 days after notice of publication.
After publication that we voted on it. Correct. There's an appeals process. We can go over that as a public hearing as well. Where petitioners can put together a petition and go to a town meeting.
Yeah.
Referendum on this, Mr. O'Connell? Is there a referendum required or allowed or available?
There is a provision in the charter, which has never been employed since it's been adopted, which calls, which allows for the override of an ordinance. It's a detailed procedure, and that provision specifies that there has to be a town meeting at which at least 200 electors would attend the town meeting. So it doesn't call for or anticipate a referendum. It has to be at a town meeting.
It just goes to a town meeting for.
For an override.
For an override of the, and that's one of those, vote no for yes and yes for no, and we've read about that in the paper in Monville. They had to go through that. Okay. I just kind of wanted to put that out there, because that will be a topic of conversation between now and the public hearing, about what happens next and what are we doing here? So we've done a whole lot of work. Is there, are there questions for the town attorney first and foremost?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Now, the ordinance that was developed, does this ordinance comply with any state regulations? Are there any state regulations we have to follow regarding the appointment of the commissions?
The state regulations, the state statutes pertaining to that have been, as I mentioned, there had to be three, five, or seven members. It has to be by ordinance, and the members have to be electors of the town. But other than that, the Board of Police Commissioners is left to the local municipality as to how it goes forward from there. It also specifies the duties of the Board of Police Commissioners once the Board of Police Commissioners is established, and that pretty much is as we have summarized in the ordinance, too.
Well, we've heard from comments under the, from the public this evening. Is it possible to have the commissioners elected, or does state law say that they should be appointed?
They can be elected or appointed.
Okay, and so our draft recommends.
Yes, we had to pick something, so we picked that.
Okay, great. That's all I have for right now.
The hiring and firing authority, that goes to the police commission for a chief?
Yes.
What's the, there was a question asked today that was brought up. It's a good question. How does that, how does that happen? So we understand how the hiring happens, but if there is a cause for firing, how does that work, the process for that?
The ordinance, which is part of the materials I skipped over, quotes the, basically, the state statutes.
There you go.
By either fire or police chief, that may never happen. It quotes the state statutes, which says the police, the chief of police may be suspended or removed from office by the Board of Police Commissioners in accordance with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statutes, as they may be amended from time to time. So we refer to the general statutes, and that basically says, the general statute says it has to be for cause.
Okay. Now, policy decisions, is that left to the chief, not to commission members? Do the commission members pretty much have authority to hire and fire and then deal with the chief? They can't dictate policy? Does that come directly from the chief?
The Board of Police Commissioners is the entity that supervises the chief, and I suspect they'd be the entity that would be adopting the regulations upon the recommendation of the chief.
The recommendations from the chief?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have a question. Clause nine, regarding, "The police department shall be considered as established when the Board of Police Commissioners has adopted such regulations and procedures as may be necessary or desirable for the proper functioning of a police department, and sufficient funds have been appropriated to the Board, and a chief of police has been appointed and sworn."
Yes, all three.
All right. So they have to figure out the regulations and procedures, devise those. We have to appropriate the necessary funds for the operation of the commission?
Or use funds which have already been appropriated, if it's revenue neutral.
But make, do whatever financial, I will not say sleight of hand we need to do, but, and then hire a police commissioner, a police chief, at which point.
And swear in him or her.
Having fulfilled those requirements, the independent police department is considered to be established.
Yes, and that would be certified by the Board of Police Commissioners to the town clerk and to the first selectman's office, the date on which that would occur, and we have to filter in the dates of giving notice to the state police under the contract and items such as that.
So they carry out all those functions?
Yep.
At which point they say, okay, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. O'Connell? I have one. How long have you been serving this town?
You are my eighth first selectman.
Oh, my goodness. Seven?
I'm looking at you, too.
Seven, first of all, and your last.
I'll check later on.
Well, so that was a long time ago.
Yes.
Eight, first selectman. Thank you for serving our time, sir. You do great work and give us an air of confidence, that we know you've looked over everything. And we spent a whole lot of time together on this, and I do appreciate the service and your expertise. What's your pleasure, commission?
I'm sorry, did you?
It's your pleasure to go forward to a public hearing. Have you heard enough evidence that we should at least go to a public hearing and consider?
I would like to have another meeting to review the, for us to have further discussion on the proposed ordinance and any additional questions that we might have. I'd like to review this again. We had additional information presented this evening, which we didn't have before. I would prefer to wait until the next meeting. Also, our agenda says discussion. It doesn't say that we're calling for a vote.
We're not going to vote on the ordinance. We're just going to.
Right, but we would vote to forward it.
We would vote to go to a public, to post a public hearing at our next Board of Selectmen
I'm satisfied with what was presented and would be ready to go to a public hearing.
The same thing, too. I think we have the public hearing, but then we also still have another meeting so we can discuss some of the issues that Mrs. Hardy brought up. We can still, obviously, discuss all of her concerns, if she has them with the ordinance, as well as any of the other questions that we've asked from Sergeant Masek and so forth like that. You know, I understand the concern and so forth like that, but I think I'm comfortable moving forward at this point.
I think a lot of information will come out at the public hearing, too. We'll hear from the public, and more questions will come out. Mr. Masek, Sergeant Masek will have his book, and we'll get into, find details, including, you know, the, some of the requests that came up tonight, and more will be forthcoming. Should no new information come up at the public hearing, then we might decide that evening, but my guess is that the public hearing will evolve to more questions and more answers. And again, the bottom line is, do we stay in the resident state trooper system, or do we figure out a way to manage ourselves? That's the ultimate question. All the minutia and the detail, and who's going to hire and who's going to fire and who's signing union contracts, that will be worked out, and I don't want to dismiss any of those points.
I think that information should be made available to the public.
Absolutely.
Before the public hearing, so that then they come, if they've watched our programs, then they come with that information and are better informed to ask additional questions.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
I'll move the following. Notice of East Lime Board of Selectmen, notice of public hearing regarding an ordinance establishing a Board of Police Commissioners. Notice is hereby given of a public meeting to be held by the East Lime Board of Selectmen at, make it 7:00 P.M.? Or do you want to make it earlier than that? Because it probably could be a while.
Let's just do 7:00 P.M. There won't be anything else on our agenda that evening, or not much, with a few things. So just 7:00 P.M. that goes for as long as it goes.
Okay, and that'd be the 19th of October, I believe, is our next date, correct? Okay. East Lime Board of Selectmen at 7:00 P.M. on the 19th of October 2016 at the East Lime Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nantucket, Connecticut, to consider the adoption of an ordinance establishing a police commission. Proposed ordinance provides that the Board of Police Commissioners would have all the powers and duties given by the Connecticut General Statutes for the general management and supervision of an organized police department of the town of East Lime, and also provides for the transition from a constabulary to an organized municipal police department. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinance are in file for public inspection at the Office of the East Lime Town Clerk, clerk, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nantucket, and at the East Lime Town Hall website, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard dated at East Lime, Connecticut this 5th day of October 2016.
Devin Bosh has been seconded. Any comments? You know, I'd like to say that as we start collating some of the information that was asked for tonight, it'll be available at the first selectman's office. I'll also say publicly that the report on the chiefs of police put together, the initial report that the task force put together, and the actual ordinance, as it was already described, that would be in the clerk's office, but the other two will be in my office, and by all means, we'll make copies as we need them. I don't want to waste paper if we, I don't want to make hundreds of copies if nobody comes by, but we'll have a few copies on file and ready to print more and come by the first selectman's office over the next couple of weeks, and you can certainly pick them up, or if you call us, we can send them out to you. It's a good comment, and as we compile information, we'll certainly make that available as well.
I'll be voting against this. I do not think that it should go forward to the public until we are fully committed to it and that we have had opportunity to discuss the total financial implications of this. I'm not opposed to going to the police, to a full-time police department, but I feel that we should have, we should have all of the information in front of us and availability to study that, because I think that by going to public hearing, we are indicating that we are bringing this to the public because we're supporting the full package. So I will be voting against this.
Okay. Other comments?
Will the information that Mrs. Hardy has requested be able to be presented at the public hearing?
Yes.
And we would have the opportunity to alter the resolution and ordinance based on information we would receive at that public hearing if we so desire?
I don't know if any financial package is going to change the ordinance to establish a police commission.
No. My point is, if there were information presented that would lead us to want to tweak the wording or.
Oh, yeah.
That we would then have the opportunity to do that before, would we have to re-present the ordinance if it were altered?
Only if the alteration were substantial to the extent that the public would need another notice.
Well, this topic has been on the table for quite some time. It seems to me that another two-week delay so that we're fully informed is not an unreasonable request.
I would agree with Roseanne. I'm certainly not opposed to an independent police force. There's a lot of good information and looks like there may be some very strong advantages to do it, but I think we need to just take another step here. Another two weeks, I don't think, is going to make a huge difference, given all the time that's gone by in the past, for all of us at the field, that we've thoroughly read over the materials and take a look at that statute and maybe make some suggestions, have a time to make proposals that might be helpful. Personally, I would appreciate the other, another couple of weeks to consider it.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any, does that leave anyone else? Okay. So the ayes have a four-two. We are going to be given a whole lot more information. Again, we have a three-ring binder, lots of information to come out. This is not a done deal. We're going to have a public hearing for the public to weigh in on this, too, and we're interested in hearing comment and questions, because all eyes on this will make this a better ordinance in the long run, and that's us going forward. We are done with that part of the agenda. If you wish to pick up and leave, you may. We're just going to do some housekeeping here. We will not be offended. We have ex officio reports. And I'm going to.
Can you take over the.
Mr. Salerno, do you?
You have a pass.
Thank you. Mr. Salerno, are there any ex officio reports?
Real quick, at the harbor management meeting, there was, they've finalized the harbor management plan. They expect it to be back from the state, the living shoreline wording, which is what was getting caught up on, and the DEP was trying to change it. They agreed to go back to just what the state statute has. Also, they approved some beach nourishment at Giant's Neck. One of the beaches has been eroded a little bit, and they're going to fix that. At the inland wetlands, there was just a few applications.
Did you keep it down, please?
There was a few applications that they went over, and Joe Bograv from the Public Works was there to talk about East Society Road and what they did to remedy the erosion there. That's all.
Ms. Hardy?
I'll pass for tonight.
Mr. Siri?
Just really quick, from the parks and rec aspect, this weekend, they had the bike and barbecue, which had a little over 200 people. It was a great start, a lot of enthusiasm, the Terry Broder walk, and Saturday night, I participated, I won't say played. Mr. Nickers, Mr. Salerno played. I participated in the youth coalition basketball game with the Harlem Wizards, which was fantastic. Great job by Jamie Barshelburn organizing that. It was a sellout. Fantastic night. I'm done.
Mrs. Cheeseman?
No, I will just echo the terrific turnout at the Harlem Wizards and the great barbecue at the Bike to Barbecue. I know they were just wishing they had more bikers.
Indeed.
So, but put you bikers out there, put it on your calendar for next year.
That would be bicyclists.
Bicyclists, not like Harley-Davidson bikers.
There's a big difference.
Cyclists, yes.
They don't get along either, I can tell. Mr. Cunningham?
No, I was just going to, sort of even mention the bike and barbecue fundraiser, that some of that money, we don't know how the numbers came out yet, but will go to help the historic properties in town, and they're very hopeful that that'll allow them to make some more improvements in some of the wonderful properties that we have in this town. So, that's it.
Thank you. I'll just make one comment, that the legal issue that happened becau- I'll just make one comment, that the legal issue that happened because of a zoning, affordable housing application, had nothing to do with a zoning officer, as was pointed out earlier, and we certainly wouldn't want to slander that situation. It was the zoning commission who made decisions to deny an application. It was appealed and overturned, and the zoning commission has yet to decide what they'll do. They voted on that, they voted on the initial denial, and then the appeal process, not the zoning officer, and I wanted to clarify that for the record. I'm gonna, in the interest of time, in a very lengthy meeting, and I suspect another one in our future, I'll pass on giving a full report. Public comments. Mr. Rando?
That's right, I'm here. I'd like to get a complete copy of that information, and you can put me on record. I'll pick it up as soon as it's ready. Tomorrow? Thank you. I just got a few things to say. I think, I told you before, I'm for a police department. We should have done it a long time ago. I think you're gonna look in that probably, without the building, 3.4 to 4.5 million to get this thing going. I think that's what it'll cost us before it's over. And I'll say a couple other words, that we had a building, and you know what I'm gonna tell you. Put a $700,000 roof on it, the old-school building, and we tore it down. Okay? Now, a temporary police department would go beautiful in that building, but we don't have it. So, we've been talking about the new schools and repairing and rebuilding, talking about tearing down the Niantic Center School. Well, that'd be a nice building to put our police department in there temporarily till we can afford to build a new one. Or maybe what we should do is build a new town hall and put the police department in here. Are you listening to what I'm saying, Mr.?
I've heard it, sir.
Okay.
I've heard it.
I mean, I sat there and listened to you now. I think you should listen to me, okay?
Put the police station here, there's the Niantic Center School, which is not gonna be knocked down, by the way.
Well, that must have changed, didn't it?
That just proves I've been listening, sir.
Yeah, it must have changed in the...
It has.
Okay. So, I think what was, when we wanted to build that building up by the high school, I think it was around 6 million bucks, and I think it was at 85. Well, I think now you're gonna build a building that's gonna cost a lot more than 6 million, if you build it right. Right, Mrs. Hardy? Build it right. And it's gonna cost the taxpayers some money, but it's something we have needed for a long time. Now, as I talked to Mr. Gardner before he left, I asked him if they had looked into regionalize the police department. He says, "Well, you can't do it because it's a state statute or a state law that says you can't do that." Well, maybe we should talk to our senate representative, and maybe my friend up there on the board, if she gets elected, to try to change that law, or that whatever it is, ordinance, or whatever it is with the state, because I think we could build a good department with Waterford, and maybe bring Old Lime into it, build one nice, beautiful police department, or use Waterford or something that should be looked into. But I think we have to look at this to save money for the taxpayers, but get the best bang for the buck we got to spend. Thank you very much. Everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rando. Anyone else to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening? If not, what, we have board comments or something like that?
Selectmen's response.
Any other comments, other than Mr. Gardner?
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye, aye.
All right.
Good evening. Thanks for all coming.